Okay, now we'll move on to public hearings. Number five, consideration of an inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water, sewer services, on secured tax rolls, presented by Robin Bertagna.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Finance staff reviews procedures and processes in comparison to those of other agencies, and make changes when something new comes along that we think better supports our goals. We have found that other jurisdictions that place liens on properties for utility services, so we took a look at doing that here in Yuba City, and are bringing this forward for your consideration. This is the first time that I'm bringing such a process forward for our city. Staff feels that it's advantageous because there isn't the administrative burden of suing in small claims court, going to court, waiting all morning for our case to get called, then ultimately receiving a judgment that doesn't actually result in any money, unfortunately coming into the city's coffers, which is typical. We go to court, we get judgments, and then we put them into the tax intercept program, and oftentimes, we still don't get money coming back on those delinquent accounts. The other thing that we've done is turn them over to a collections agency, and typically when we do that, they collect about 10%, and we pay them 40%. So in the case of the list that we looked at, we had about $50,000 in city receivables. Ultimately, we would collect probably about $5,000. Of that, we would pay them their 40%, and net to the city would be about $3,000, with the remaining $45,000 still remaining outstanding and uncollectible. The last time we updated the city's utility code, we put it in place to where we made property owners responsible for tenants within properties, so that if we had a tenant move out on us, we could require the property owner to put it in their name, trying to scale down on tenants running out on us and owing us money. That said, city staff is feeling that by leaning the properties, we would lean $50,000 and ultimately result in $50,000 in collections through the property tax assessment rules. The cost of doing so is 30 cents per parcel with a one-time setup fee of $150. So for the first year, it would cost us about $200 to do this. Future years would likely be under $50. The list that was sent to you previously with the agenda packet, I'm pleased to say that we've had 45 accounts paid in full totaling $11,203 after sending out the notices and working with those customers and receiving payments. So an updated list was provided to you tonight with a total of 128 accounts, $42,000, and just under $168. This ultimately represents about 1% of our utility accounts, because we have around 20,000 utility accounts in the city. So of 128 customers, that's very minimal. We do, most of our customers pay us every month and on time. These are the handful of accounts that we've had difficulty collecting. In addition to those, we have seven that we've withdrawn from the list because they contacted us after receiving our letter, and we've put them on a payment plan. And then we have four where the owner has changed, and that person no longer owns the property, so we've gone forth with the intercept program to try to intercept on tax refunds when available to us. That said, we also had about $7,000 worth of accounts that are included in the receivables listing that are sewer-only accounts, where people, property owners, just haven't paid us. We have no mechanism to force collection. We can't shut off their water service because they're sewer-only accounts. They don't have city water services. So they've come to understand that we're not going to go out and dig up the roadway and cut and cap their service. So this, by putting it on the property tax rolls, it assures bringing them current at least once a year, and even if we only get payment once a year, at least it would be caught up once a year. So city staff discussed this proposal and wanted to bring it forward for your council's consideration. I know we've got quite a few folks here tonight that would like to speak about it. I'm here and available to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments from the council for Robin at this time?
Robin, I'm sorry, through the mayor.
Go ahead.
I know you probably said, but refresh my memory. How many accounts are typically delinquent, what percentage?
This list comprises less than 1% of our accounts. We normally do shut offs on two days per month, and on average, I would say we have less than 300 accounts that we shut off every month. It varies. It's somewhat seasonal.
One to 2%?
Yeah. It's, we have a very good collection rate because we force payment by shutting off people's water in most cases.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public. And I do have a few cards here, as I said, and I will start off with Sukdev Sahota, please. The next person in line will be Sohal. So please get up behind and just wait and be ready.
Hi, my name is Sukdev Sahota. My only question is, like the staff said, you cannot turn the sewer line off, but I got billed for 10 months. How come they didn't turn the water off two or three months after they didn't pay the bill? Now, three years later, they billed me for 10 months, which they should have turned the water off, so tenant could have left or paid the bill. So that's the only concern I have. Why 10 months? I know recology, they do the same, but they don't wait for 10 months. So it's $730 I got billed for. City should have done some better, something better, just not to let it linger for forever. Now, they waited for three years to build me, which my tenant didn't pay three years ago.
Only thing I could recommend is bring that to the department. Robin can direct you. Goes through the, doesn't come to me. It goes to the clerk. It goes to the clerk. Clerk always gets it and checks it out.
So, yeah.
I would be happy to talk with you and find out specifically what the situation was related to your account.
Because typically, yes, in the scenario he described, we most definitely do go out and shut off the water. I'm not aware of the specific address, and if there was a tenant living there, that was potentially a problem, and maybe the tenant kept turning the water back on, and ultimately, we locked it off, or what the situation is. But I would be happy to meet with anyone and/or talk with them by phone if they work out of town, what have you, to try to resolve this. The lien process is kind of our last-ditch effort to try to collect on these accounts, so that we're not having to spread those uncollectible receivables to other rate pairs. But I'm happy to meet with anyone or talk to anyone about their account.
So, Mr. Sahota, I recommend that you go ahead and get ahold of her and get this worked out, and there will be a good resolution for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sohal Bull, I think it's Bullwant. And then Brian, get up right afterward, please. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Bellwant Sohal. I have same problem with my rentals. Couple month I pay already, but then he said he going to take care, but he did not pay. I call in to disconnect, and they didn't, and then they send me that bell back. Please.
Get ahold of Robin. Robin, take his name, I guess, and set up an appointment and find out.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And then, I think it looks like Karen.
My name's Brian D. Tipper. I got a notice late. It's about six, eight months behind. I calculated it out, they didn't pay for seven months, and then all of a sudden, I evicted them, and now I got a bill for 350-something bucks, and I don't understand what's going on. Why didn't they turn off the water? Why didn't they tell me that they were delinquent? And I would have turned off the water. I would have turned it off and locked it out, but they didn't tell me anything. Now they want me to pay $351? Why? It wasn't in my name. I didn't use the water. My client, my tenant used it. They should be paying. I mean, thank you.
Basically, same answer.
I understand.
Go with them and try, and thank you. I appreciate you coming.
Mr. Mayor, if you just give Robin Bertagna, the finance director, your circumstance will probably be shared by others, so I'd like to afford Robin an opportunity to respond to a circumstance where water, he received a bill as the owner for $350 because the tenant hadn't been paying for several months, and his question is why, pardon me?
Seven months.
Seven months. So why had it not been shut off earlier? And I just want to be able to adequately, if you can, address that in case others have the same circumstance. Thank you.
Typically, my staff, we send out a bill on the first of the month. That bill doesn't get paid. For example, a bill gets sent out the following month that shows the past due balance. If that doesn't get paid, we sent out a red notice that tells them that if they don't pay, we will shut them off. So there's about a 45-day delay, 50 days at the most, and we do shut offs typically two days per month. So it would be very unusual for an account to go beyond three months without being shut off. We do have dollar limits, for example. If for some reason, an account had a balance due of less than $40, we don't go shut somebody off, because the fee to shut them off and turn them back on costs more than the balance that they owed us. So we try to be reasonable about it. But we did change the municipal code to make owners responsible, to avoid the situation of tenants running out and leaving us with balances. We saw consistency with properties where the same property would have several delinquent balances that we were unable to collect, and we couldn't find the tenants. So ultimately, we said that owners, if we've had a delinquency, the owner must be responsible for services. We will also provide a dual notification service where we will bill the tenant, and also give a copy to the owner, send them both bills, because ultimately, it's between the landlord and the tenant if the landlord wants to make the tenant responsible for payment. We try to work with landlords as best we can and use all the resources available in our toolbox to ensure that the accounts get taken care of. But it would be an exception to let an account go for seven months and not have a turnoff situation.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
What happened?
Robin?
I don't know. I would have to be, sit down with you and take a look at your county's history.
Get a meeting with her and work it out.
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Robin, you say that process is in place now?
The process of dual notifications? Yes, it is.
Right. It is. All right.
Yeah, it's not automatic.
Not automatic.
It's not, no. We have, because we don't go back in history and look to see who an owner is on a residence, like with, for example, the assessor's office, to see who holds title to the property. We just know who we have in there that's come in and said they're signing on for service.
Okay. So if they want dual notification, they need to come in and let you know?
Yes, and request it.
All right.
And then we're glad to do it.
Important. All right, thank you.
The mayor? Yes, please.
When the tenant signups, when it's a tenant, isn't protocol that they bring the rental agreement in with them?
Yes.
So wouldn't we know the landlord at that time? Shouldn't we take a copy at that time that we have it in our file, then, for in the future? Or do we keep the file, or we just look at it?
We keep a copy of the landlord agreement. I'm looking at Katrina for verification.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I was trying to get it.
Katrina, do we keep a copy of the landlord agreement?
Landlord?
Yeah, when a tenant comes in to sign in for service?
Yeah, the documents we were collecting.
Okay.
I think we do scan it in.
Okay.
For as long as we've been scanning.
Right. But then we wouldn't know if the landlord sold the property and somebody else bought it unless somebody notifies us, because we don't check title transfers with the county.
But if we would send the bill to the old landlord, I'm sure he would respond very quickly, knowing that he's going to get a $300 bill.
Exactly. I did.
Okay, so, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Karen?
Thank you.
Then Elaine Miles, after that, please. Over there.
Just when, in this case, it is my husband, but when my husband and I have our rentals, each have our own, some joint, we customarily say to the tenant, we're responsible for the things we can get leaned on. Here in this city that I was aware of, that was only recology, and therefore, we pay the garbage bill. It is a consistent bill, build it in, it's not a problem. Over in Marysville, it's recology, and the sewer services are billed separately, and we build that in. This, to me, was a change in procedure. I was unaware that our property could be leaned. I would propose, if it's possible, that the city revise the resolution to do something such as have the, this would have to be notified properly, that the landlord pay sewer in a base water. I would be agreeable. No questions asked, agreeable to be saying sewer is $40 and the base water is 15, tack it in, pass it on, everybody's happy. Because I've had tenants abuse water like you won't believe, but I'm agreeable to a base amount. I think all of this, if you want my gut opinion, it all gets back to personal responsibility, and this is where we're tipping the iceberg again of just because it's easier, just because we don't want to spend time with our city, having to sit in the court. Well, guess who had got to sit in the city court system while evicting them? I don't see the difference, honestly, between PG&E, recology, or water and sewer. Why does PG&E lock you out? Recology, pull the cans. Why are we not going out sooner and shutting off the water? And I don't know what happens to sewer, but shutting off the water is certainly an option. I also don't understand how, in today's day and age, with the number of assistance programs we have throughout our city, our state, and even backed by federal government, these instances, when a tenant is one month late and they come in crying, crying, I have a baby, this, that, there's programs. Why does it always fall back to government, or what I now feel like you, sorry, are making landlords as a quasi-government, well, just eat it, just take it off your taxes, just pass it on? I'll tell you this. I've been a landlord for 25 years, and I intended to continue to do this, and I'll tell you exactly why, two reasons. It's a risk-reward thing. I could shove my money into mutual fund and get a decent return, but by doing this, in the past, I've made some decent side income. I'm telling you, the rewards are not as great anymore. The risks are getting higher. We're having tenants do things that we don't even realize they're doing until they're already evicted and gone. The other reason I got into becoming a landlord was because, honest to God, when I drive through my city, I'll see a house, and I'll think, dang it, that needs this. It needs this help, this help, this help, and it can turn it around. With our minimal amount of sweat equity and talents and tools, we turn a home around and make it a better place for us to live in. And I actually view this as community service. But if you want all of us landlords to just keep eating the bill...
You need to wrap up.
We've already invested in New Mexico.
Thank you.
We could pull.
Richard Hobbs, after Elaine.
Elaine Miles, and I say ditto, ditto, ditto. I have a tenant. And I have several, actually, but only one within the city. About everything was answered, but why does it take months for something to show up? We have the situation on a Yuba County house, and they let us know within two months. It sounds like we won't know unless it's at least three or four months. Another issue I have is if you get a copy of the landlord agreement, your leases, for the most part, are good for one year. So are you asking for them to come in with a renewal? Because they continue month-to-month under the law. And it doesn't sound like we're getting that. The abuse of the water? I pay the water bill and charge the tenant on one of them, because they reduced their water significantly after I started giving them. It's two months late, and I could lose it if they move out. But by giving them the actual cost, they brought it down. They didn't care if they didn't have to pay it. And so if we're putting us all on here where the landlord has to pay it completely, but I give them a bill, it's part of my lease, you're going to add to a lot more water, which I happen to see in my neighborhood on a new rental, running all over the gutters. Nobody came out. And what happens if this house is under foreclosure? And it goes on there? Is the city really going to get that money? Or is it just going to be lost? And what does it cost to file that lien? I've been out of work for a lot of years.
30 cents.
Uh-uh. To file a lien on property?
Sorry.
I think that needs to be looked at a little bit closer. There's a lot of government costs of putting a lien on property, but...
I misspoke. I'll find out from...
I don't know. But that's something I think that we should really look at. Why don't you send, if somebody turns out late, why don't you send both bills to property owner and the tenant? And let them know immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to address some of Mrs. Miles' comments. Our understanding is that to place a lien and collect through the property tax system for a parcel is 30 cents. If I find out different, I will stand corrected, but that's my current understanding.
By setting up the program that you have available, that's all it will take?
Yeah. And as far as sending dual notifications, part of our process is when a tenant is delinquent, we absolutely go shut them off. Speaking with Katrina just a moment ago, because she deals with these customers firsthand, most of the situations where there's several months of usage, it's because we shut the customer off, they turn themselves back on. We see usage on the account, and so we continue billing for it. So it does take a little time before we go lock them off, and when we see that happen repeated times, we send out staff to pull the meter. And we've actually had people, I don't want to advertise this, but hook up their own PVC pipe. So we try to discover any ways we can. Obviously, it's not a free commodity. Water is a very valuable service within the state of California, so we do try to apply the rules fairly and equitably to all of our customer base, which we're required to by Proposition 218. We also do dual notification to property owners with our final billing process. So we try to always let property owners know when we're aware of who the landlord is. I'm happy to work with landlords and try to assist them with these accounts, because these are going back, some of them to 2014, which is when we changed the ordinance within our city municipal code.
Thank you, Robin.
I think we have another speaker.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I might have been...
Mr. Mayor?
I might have been wrong on the, yes, that was wrong, eight. Richard, you're going to, not on this issue, I got a...
Mr. Mayor?
But I got to dress her up quick. Richard?
Yes.
I called you up incorrectly, you're on number eight, so if you could, sorry, I had you sit down. They're all stacked on top of each other, so I had to pull yours out. Okay, now we will move on to advice or comment from county council.
You got the wrong jurisdiction. I'm the city attorney, but that's okay.
I'm sorry. City attorney.
Mayor, there are two more speaker cards on the subject.
Yes, we know that, but he's going to address me.
Okay.
He's addressing an issue.
I just wanted to clarify the issue of the lien and whatnot. What we're, if the council were going to adopt this resolution, we're relying on Health and Safety Code section, which allows this, and it would allow the delinquent charges to be collected on the property tax rolls. And pursuant to the statute, these charges that are listed in this report that lists the respective properties and the charges, we send that to the county, and it would also constitute a lien. So I guess the county can charge a nominal fee of maybe 30 cents, but by virtue of the council, if the council were to adopt this resolution, and the city sends it to the county, they would then place it on the tax rolls, and it would be collected pursuant to property tax rolls. And in the resolution pursuant to the state statute, we also say that it would constitute a lien. So if the property's going to be sold, and pursuant to lien, the city would collect their money. So that's how the lien process works. Hopefully, that helps.
So money eventually does get to us through sometimes a couple of steps in process. Okay.
I'm counting on the collection rate being better than our other collection methods.
Is this Su...
Suji Yang?
Suji Yang?
Yeah.
Yeah, please. And then Adam, afterward?
So my question is, my tenant been eviction in 2014 November. So just the last month, I got letter said he owed $463 for water bill, but before her eviction, I don't know anything. I didn't got any note, I didn't know anything. So already three years, and suddenly I got this letter. I don't understand what. What this policy said will be, all the bill will be roll over to my tax. I don't know what's the reason. How long, how long ago this policy start? I ask the city hall, the city hall said follow the recology, but the recology always early gave me note, said your tenant, oh, some, how much money they didn't pay, we will go and roll, roll over to your tax. But my situation is this is three years ago, before I never got any notification. And before I went to city hall, city hall always says tenant supposed to bill, because the name transferred to tenant's name. So I don't know anything. And finally, before eviction, she already been eviction, and nobody can find her. So I don't know, I don't understand why power to me. Before, if I'm early know the information, I will ask, I will be responsible. But I don't know anything before he left.
Understand. So then, the recommendation then is to get on the list of the names, to set an appointment, and they will work on you to straighten this out for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's one of the things, is when things like this come up, all of a sudden, everybody comes out. This is, by the way, part of the process of citizen government, representative government, to where, you know, a lot of things are not known, and there are things that we can never look forward to, the missings of different things. This is the process. I call it a cake. You throw all the ingredients together, and hopefully, when you're done, you end up have a great cake when you're done, when you cook it. And usually, cooking means a little temperature, a little pressure. It's the process of our government structure, and so we're very happy to work out the anomalies, the problems that come up when things are changed, because we knew there was a problem, but we were trying to fix a problem, and this is part of the process of getting that done. So hopefully, we don't offend anybody. We understand the being upset, but, you know, there is a process to getting things corrected, and that's why we, you know, this public meeting is for you. So go on to Adam Markott.
My name's Adam Markott. I'm here representing my virtual sister-in-law. She's out of town right now, but she wanted me to be present to object on her behalf. The prop, why me even here for her is because there's a lack of notice. Due process is not, is not being met for property owners here. That's one of the biggest issues, I think I've heard from everybody who's spoken so far, is that the property owners don't get adequate notice of the, of their guarantee of their tenant's account. I don't understand why, I would like to know when exactly the utility code was amended to make this effective, so that property owners became liable for their tenants, and I'd like to know when the notice was given to the property owners that they were now, that they were subject to this, to this change. My parents have been a property, have owned properties for over 40 years, and they've had a water account for over 40 years. I recently took over their bills because they're older. I missed a bill, I have a well myself, but missed a bill, and then 60 days later, the water's turned off on my parents, who've had the same account, the same house, for 45 years. However, Lorene has a tenant in her rental property, but the way, the tenant died in May of 2016, so this is well over a year old, this is now coming back at her. This tenant, she's the third down from the list, she's the, one of the highest outstanding balances on the list, the third from the highest. And it's because I know for a fact, her tenant would call, or she'd go in and make a payment, and, oh, you know, I need this, I need that, I'm having this problem, this problem, next month, next month, next month, here's five bucks. You know, and so they let her go on for months and months and months. This bill is almost $1,000. Along with due process, you also got equal protection violations, because, you know, the property owners are not parties to the contract, and now you want to add them in and make them a, you want to make them a guarantee for the water account that they've never even had notice for. You know, there's several, like, several violations, I believe, for different rights of the property owners. Equal protection, property rights, privacy rights, because now we're requiring that my lease agreement with the tenant be public, scanned in the public documents, the right of association, right of contract, right of judicial access, and most importantly, this really does kind of boil down to double taxation. Property owners pay property taxes to fund the positions, so that this kind of stuff doesn't happen. Why is it happening over and over? Why is this going on? What we need to look at... What we need to look at is, is it appropriate for a taxpayer to pay their taxes properly, fund these positions, and then these positions create, allow these big, huge bills to rack up, and then say, oh, oh, that's a problem, so let's slack it back off to the property owner who pays my salary, you know, and give it right back to them? It just doesn't seem appropriate. It seems like double taxation without representation. And that's all I'd like to say, and on Lorene's behalf. If, if it's really, the, it's responsibility of the employees of the city, either it's mismanagement, either because they haven't set proper guidelines for their employees to follow on when a short payment is going to be accepted, or they haven't cut off the account in the beginning when they should have for non-payment. Thank you.
1204 Clark Avenue, third one down.
We have one more for number five.
Okay. I'll wait.
Harminder Singh, go on up.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Harminder Singh, and I have a similar situation with my tenant. He moved out like three years ago in 2014, and somehow I got this notification in my mail, and I was not sure what's coming in, you know? So I know where to go now.
Yeah, go right there and get on the list and get this straightened out.
All right, thanks, sir.
You betcha. Thank you. Okay, Robyn, you have any more comments?
Couple of things. Dual notification, I think, is gonna be the key to alleviating at least some of the stress that our landlord owners are feeling right now. At the time that this new ordinance went forward, this was publicized in the Appeal Democrat. I've asked Katrina to verify the date. I want to say it was in September of 2014, but that's off the top of my head. So what we're seeing is these accounts, from that point forward, they are very delinquent, because this is the first time that we've brought this forward. And as a policy matter, my plan would be to bring this forward at this time of year, every year in the future, and have a much smaller list of accounts. I want to look at the individual accounts with the balances that are so large, because we put notes in our utility billing database that say, we've read the meter, there's consumption, even though the meter's been off. Send staff out to lock it off. We have notes that kind of show the history of the account and why. In some cases, when they're turned back on, we charge a fee for that. We're sending out staff repeatedly to deal with the same account, because it's a problem account. If a lock is cut, we charge for the cut lock, because it's destruction of city property. So there's reasons why these balances accumulate. That's why I want the opportunity to meet with the owners on a one-on-one basis and review the account history, and see if there's some reason behind that I can't answer right on the spot as it relates to these accounts. I knew that this would be a contentious matter, frankly, but yet, I, as your finance director, can't allow bad debt accounts to just run free without addressing them. And I'm happy to say that this process got everyone's attention, and got folks talking about it, and responding, and wanting to talk to us. As I said, we had forty-five accounts paid in full, over eleven thousand dollars collected by the city that otherwise wouldn't have been collected by folks that found out they owed. And I'm happy when me or my staff finds the accounts and collects on them, rather than a collection agency that charges us forty percent, because that way, then all the dollars come here locally and help keep our, our rates at a lower level. So with that, I'll answer any further questions.
Any questions, comments from council members?
Just a question through the mayor. So, Robyn, in the event that a lock is cut, that would be a criminal activity, am I correct? Are the police notified and engaged in, in that criminal activity for an investigation against the property owner? I mean, against the resident?
We have notified them on occasion. Typically, now, our process, because our officers are very busy with, frankly, more important crimes, now we request that Public Works go out and pull the meter.
If there's a bypass put in place, is there a criminal complaint sought for bypassing the utilities?
That is when we get police involved, for sure. Absolutely.
Is the property owner notified when that happens?
I'm gonna look at Katrina.
Is there a continuing bill that proceeds through the, through the system once the police are involved?
Is, does the bill continue once the police are involved? And I would say yes to that.
If there's still an active account, there's some consumption, especially.
I mean, I find a problem when, once a criminal activity has occurred, that we would continue to look to formally engage the property owner. Property owners are, are in a business. And typically, businesses, when, when there's criminal activity that is precipitated against that business, they may incur costs as a result of that. But certainly, they shouldn't be, continue to have to, let's say, pay for water that should have been shut off, they thought was shut off, and now they're incurring that additional expense on an ongoing criminal event.
We can certainly add to our process, making sure the landlord owner is notified in the instances when police is involved. That's pretty rare, because by the time we get to pulling the meter, oftentimes, the tenant's in the wind, and probably running out, frankly, on the landlord as well as us.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I, I can imagine that, that is the, you know, it's the dog chasing the tail at that point. It's pretty hard to catch it every time. And tenants are knowingly going to then move to another jurisdiction, or, or create the very same problem for another landlord. Dual notification, I think, is one of the paramount pieces that, that they're asking for. I can only say that, that as an individual that has a renter that I see after, I make sure that, monthly, that, that individuals pay their utilities along the way, and they have to show proof that they've, that they've paid it. That's a, one prudent way of doing business in today's society, where individuals become more mobile on you. And contracts, I disagree with anyone saying that a contractor, a lease is only good for one year. The lease is a term in which has been agreed upon contractually between two parties. So, you know, the collections, or how you collect the, your debt, is certainly paramount. But I don't believe that it, it should be all the responsibility of the, of the property owner, when, again, when they haven't even been notified over a course of time. It's kind of hard to come back three years later and say, pay up on a, on a past debt. That's difficult, once you're in business.
Okay, I've got two more cards, and then I'll probably close the public session. It's gonna be Jaswinder Singh here, or Harjinder Kaur? Whichever one wants to speak? Okay, except was the same concern? Okay. Then you would just get on the list of the names, and go chat with them, and, and, get a helper out there. And then also Rajwant Kaur? Yes? Okay, then, you've got right there, just, anybody that has the same types of things that would like to do some resolution of this, actually, we'll probably go on to another item pretty soon, meet with them, and set up an appointment, a time to come in. Okay, with that.
So, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, Mr.
Close the public session. Bring it back to the council to have any more comments or questions for Robyn, or staff in any way?
So, Robyn, so, Robyn, in the future, we will, like, third, when it's three months, we will notify the property owner?
Yes, as long as we have the owner's information in our utility database. That's why I'm interested in reviewing each account individually for those that are here tonight, to see if we have their information in our database, in which case, it would be unusual for us to not reach out to them. My staff is pretty assertive in trying to contact people, and make them aware of any balance, and collect payment.
Would, would this, some of these changes have to come before the council, for an ordinance update or anything?
No, this is already included in the ordinance. What is changing is me bringing them to you formally and requesting a resolution, authorizing me to place them on the property tax rolls.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned, if this is a procedure that, that city council agrees with, then I would bring these back annually each year.
And then, Robyn, we've been doing this for a while. Were we asking the tenants to show us their rental agreement in 2014?
Yes, we were.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I didn't want to make any of my comments sound like, that I feel that, that the city is responsible for doing the business of the business person or the landlords. That's not what, what the intent of my comments are. The intent of my comments are, we should do everything to facilitate their business as any other business in Yuba City, in allowing them to know when there is debt that is owed on a property, so they can also help mitigate that and be a partner of sorts with the city. I, I agree with, you know, trying to streamline, reduce the, the costs, at the same time, bring the revenues to the responsible party, or from the responsible party to the city, and not spreading those costs against the general ratepayer for specific utilities.
Thank you. My last comment, before I read the names of, of some of the letters, people that sent letters, is that I have a few rentals, and I've had to pay the bills and stuff, and it irritates me the heck, and that I have to pay tenants responsibilities. So unfortunately, as it is, it's a business, business is profit-loss, and the sensitivity of the loss is very high with me, as I can tell with everybody else. So I, the pain is there. But we'll refine this as we go, since it was new since 2014, to get this refined, and to address it every year is the right procedure, I believe, that we should do. So, in my opinion, we'll make that decision as a group at another time. But now I'll move on to reading the names of people that sent letters. Yes. Oh, yeah, okay. Gary Loughlin had sent. One of them was already represented, for Lorene Martinez, was already, somebody here spoke on that. Mrs. Sharon Hansen, Julie Baldwin, and Sean Van Dusen, Shauna Van Dusen had sent letters, and that are, I just needed to call out that we did receive some letters also on this issue. With that, we need to work on adopting, whoops, where is it at here? I need to get back to my, some action and decision on this resolution. Okay, well, you can present it to the clerk afterward, and that should have been presented during this, this open time previously, but we've closed the public part of it. But it'll definitely be accepted into the record. So, you just go ahead and take it over to her now, if you wish.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing. Pardon me, Mr. Buckland.
Go ahead, ma'am. You can still go.
There have been, we always look for reasonableness at the staff level, and I know your council does, too. There have been a lot of good points raised this evening. As we implement, there will be bumps and grinds in the process. This was adopted by your council, in terms of making the landlords responsible, some time ago. I, I do believe this is the right direction to go, in terms of the responsibility for the ultimate payment. That said, there have been a lot of good points raised. Robin Bertagnar, finance director, has met with a lot of people. So should you decide to go forward in this direction, my request that might need to be clarified by our city attorney, is that you provide some clarification that affords our finance director the ability to amend any of these amounts downward, based upon her individual meetings with the prop, subject property owners, and as it's deemed appropriate. Because I wouldn't want you, if you decide to go in this direction, just to adopt the list as it stands here tonight, because people have raised points. It sounds like maybe there are some arrangements that can be found with our finance director. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, I think I already said, pursuant to the state statute and our ordinance, the process that we would follow, we would, we'd adopt the resolution, which has the report attached to it, that lists the various parcels of properties, and associates those with, with the associated delinquent charge. That, in turn, is sent to the county auditor, and they put that on their tax rolls. So my point is, we're, we are adopting this report that's attached to the resolution, and that lists the properties and the dollar amounts. If the council's not, not comfortable with that, then we need to amend that. The, the only additional issue that gets complicated is pursuant to state statute, it says we're supposed to forward this report, if it's adopted by the council, prior to August 10th of each year. And I don't know what the Sutter County Auditor, what, if they're beholden to that time period or not. So that's just another, another, like I say, complication in this process.
I'm confident that we can meet with folks soon, and go through the account history, and try to resolve any issues that seem reasonable to be resolved.
So we need to be able to put some wording change in there to allow the current list in there to be adjusted and amended, to be the ones that still remain delinquent? Yes.
We want to delegate that authority to the finance director to, to make the appropriate revisions to the, to the, to the report.
To the report. Okay. So, we know that, we know what we want to get done, so somebody want to come up with a, okay. I know he's good at doing this. That's why I'm pointing.
Move to adopt a resolution for the inclusion of the delinquent charges as modified by consent of this board, giving jurisdiction to our finance director, to modify and change that upon meeting with individuals that are on that list, in which she deems necessary to reduce.
As she, as she deems appropriate.
As she deems, deems appropriate to reduce, to meet the, the collection of those charges. And penalties for water and sewer service on the secured tax rule, in the same manner as general taxes, and direct that a, that a lien also be placed on subject properties. The attachments to that would be, the exhibit as modified of the delinquent accounts, and exhibit B, a sample of the delinquent letter, and then the resolution authorizing the collection of delinquent accounts. I'm no attorney, but thank you.
We know that you'll.
Tim, for helping me speak.
Welcome. You do a very good job.
Oh, thank you, sir.
So we do have a motion, and that's giving Robyn discretion on the list, as to what the final list would be after meeting with the citizens, case by case. That, and yours was the motion, so we need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, see, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Question real quick?
Oh, yeah, good question, yes.
The motion was just to allow her authority, or just to approve the?
No, the whole thing. He quoted the whole thing.
All right.
And then with the modification.
All right.
And then, of course, the. And then, of course, the acceptance of the letters into the record, too. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, four one. Okay, it moves forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll let the people leave that... Give us a little time.